I'd like to call to order the Village Board meeting, regular meeting of September the 5th, 2013, to order at 7:02 PM. Mayor Gunther?
Here.
The clerks here, trustee Addington?
Here.
Trustee Barker?
Here.
Trustee Barry?
Here.
Trustee Nero?
Here.
Trustee Scott?
Here.
Trustee Seneca?
Here.
Manager Searle?
Here.
Attorney Zamanek?
Here.
And our Public Works Director May?
Here.
Okay, would everybody please rise and join me in the pledge of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
At this point, we'd like to go into open forum. Is there anybody here who's not filled out a form who'd like to speak? If not, I'm going to ask the clerk to please read the ones that are here, and they can please come to the podium and state your name. Pete Kramer. Oh, Mr. Kramer. You baby.
Hello, everyone. I'm here this evening. I wrote actually an email to most of you last week about Labor Ready, the business that is on 27 East Chicago. I appreciate the feedback that I received from some of you. You know, so just, I really wanted to come in tonight and just kind of voice my concerns in person. You know, this is a, you know, we've lived at the address now for three years, and, you know, the activity that goes on there is definitely not something we anticipated when we moved into the home. You know, like I stated in my email, the employees there aren't of, you know, they're not the best quality citizens you want to have around your children. And as you can see, I brought, you know, two of my three young children this evening. And that, the little guy right there is the one who actually, last week prompted me writing the email to you when he saw one of the employees there urinating on the side of the building. Now, I had seen that many a times, and I'm not going to beat a dead horse here. I mean, I've, you guys, I assume most of you have read the email, but, you know, it's, like I said, it's employees urinating on the building, disregard for just the neighborhood. So this is something that my wife and I were used to on a daily basis, but what I don't think is really known is with the school being right down the street there, the type of employees that this place kind of attracts. I think if most of the parents knew, or the PTO knew what kind of employees were there, they might take a second look and question why this building and why this establishment is allowed there. I encountered it this morning. There was a small family, a mother and her two children, walking southbound on Linden, and the employees wouldn't even get off the sidewalk and move. They had the, the children had to actually walk around these people, and that's obscene to see. So, like I said, I'm not going to beat a dead horse here with this, but I just wanted to kind of introduce myself and make myself aware about the issue, and I appreciate all of your time.
Again, we appreciate your concern, and I know we asked, I'll ask our police chief to come up and please, we've had them starting to monitor again, he has some things he'd like to talk about.
Thank you, thank you, Mayor. Since we reviewed the email, we have stepped up our patrols. We have our day shift and our night shift officers in the area more often, spending as much time as they can. Since last week, we've observed no violations, not that, that's not to say that they aren't occurring, but they aren't occurring when the officers are there. Sergeant Gabrieluski has also reached out to the employees, not the employees, but the supervisors or managers of Labor Ready, made them aware of the concerns and that we're going to be in the area, and they also will be trying to monitor our employees and seeing if the employees can comport themselves to a more proper behavior. We're also looking into other remedies that the village can take. Can we require Labor Ready to have a porta potty out back? What ordinances can we enact? We're checking with other villages to see if they've had a similar situation, to see what type of remedies they have in place. I also put an email, personally put an email into the area manager, the branch manager of this Labor Ready, asking for a sit-down face-to-face. I haven't had a response yet, so we'll be reaching out to him again tomorrow to see if he can come in so we can talk face-to-face of our concerns and let him know as well. So we are there, I'm sure you've seen the squad cars, and Sergeant Gabrieluski has stopped and talked to the residents and see, let them know that we will be there. We encourage if you hear or see anything, please let us know, and I will keep the board updated on the situation.
And I know trustee Scott, you sent an email back, and unfortunately, it's permitted use.
I understand that. We've had this issue before, and it's come up before the board, because I know we talked to the owner about this of the building. And of course, his comment was he needs to make sure his building's rented, and I can understand that. Have we reached out to the owner yet to see how long their lease is in effect till?
In response to a previous investigation, one of our detectives conducted, we believe that the lease may come up at the end of this year, and that's why I want to sit down with the manager or the branch manager and determine, you know, what their future plans are, and also get some lease information as well.
I think if we talk to the owner, we might be able to instill in him what he's got created there, and it's not the best thing for the community.
We'll reach out to him as well.
And that's B-2, right? That's not part of the B-1? It's B-2, the zoning there?
I think so.
It's B-2? Maybe we need to look at some of the permitted uses again in that area. But the question I have, and I don't even know if this would be like police protocol or if it would border unethical, I don't know, but maybe a plain clothesman just having coffee one morning in Mr. Kramer's backyard and just kind of observe what's going on?
Deputy Chief Gunther and I, we surveil the area as well as with Sergeant Gabrieluski. There's really no, we talk in your driveway or someplace, it's right there, there's no good place to conduct--
They actually like to sit and observe?
We talk about our undercover cars, our officers, like a tactical unit going out, but they would just stand out, there's just really, we went around for about a half hour looking for different areas, and there's really, since it's a confined area, not a really good space.
I mean, even with having them have a porta potty outside, I think they should be required to allow that inside. I mean, they have the building, let them come in and use the restroom.
I did, I don't know what their business requirements are. We do know that the only violations we have seen is smoking, whether smoking within 15 feet, and in checking with our village prosecutor, we're going to be coming back in front of the board to create a village ordinance. Right now, there's the Illinois Free Air Act, I believe it is. If we were to arrest or charge somebody, it has to go to the Health Department for a hearing. It's not even to a court, so we want to try to have a little bit more enforcement teeth and have no smoking ordinance.
What time are the employees out there? What's the normal hours?
They've seen them there as early as 6 o'clock, 6:30 in the morning, so that's why we have our night shift out there, previous to 6:00 and after. All hours of the day. I believe they also have a night shift where they have people come back in the afternoon, and then they'll have work for them at night as well, too. There's people around there pretty much almost all hours of the day.
And this is a pathway to the school also?
Linden's on the corner of Linden and Chicago Avenue, so yes.
Oh, yeah, I go right, I go right by--
Crossing guard, right at intersection.
Yes.
I understand it, but still, could they have to go through this?
Yeah, every, all the parent, that's, Linden is the feeder street to Manning School, and so, yes, they have to drive right past that location to get to--
Or walk.
Or walk, well, you know, I drive, because I, the eight-year-old is in third grade, Samantha, and so I drive it a lot, and we see them there, but I will tell you, coming off of that corner, there's probably, there's gotta be 20 or 20, a minimum of 20 or 25 parents walking their kids, some with preschoolers that come with them to pick up the others. So there, you know, it's one thing to drive by, it's another thing when you're walking everybody and just see what's going on. I think it's a problem, and I don't have an answer at this point, but I don't, I agree with what Sue said, I think we need to look at something. There's gotta be some control someplace, and, you know, as I said to somebody, we were talking about this the other day, I said, "These are not people applying for CPA positions." So there, it is what it is, and it may just be just in the wrong spot.
Probably should go in and check their I-9s, too. They probably don't have any.
It's an issue that, as a, my business being on the west side of Cass, I'm familiar with, with these, these guys, they make the circuit there, and they hang in the alley, and I pick up, I pointed out to the chief the other morning, so I personally sent your email, I'm keeping a closer eye, but I've been aware of the problem for a long time, and we take it very seriously, and we will continue to look into it.
Amen.
I think that's the unified feeling, is that if there's something we can do to stop it, we will. So, and thank you for coming.
Thank you, Pete, for bringing it up.
Tom should stay up there.
Tom, you should just stay up there.
Yeah, Tom, I'd as well stay right there, there you go.
Our next open forum request, from Chief Mulher.
On behalf of Chief Weiss and myself, we'd like to remind and invite all our residents and everyone watching on TV that this Sunday at 1:00 at the Fire and Police Facility, 500 North Cass Avenue, we'll be having our 12th annual memorial service for 9/11. Will begin at 1:00. It will be held in the fire bay, so right now, the weather says it's supposed to be good, but if it's inclement, we're indoors and it'll be fine. There'll be refreshments for everyone afterwards, and we'd just like to have everyone remember those people and our heroes that we lost on 9/11 12 years ago. Also, on 9/11 itself, on Wednesday at 9:00 in front of Fire Station 2 or 500 North Cass, we will be having a moment of silence at 9:00, and that's probably about a minute. So if anybody would like to join us, for all the on-duty personnel who are there, they're more than welcome to join us for our one-minute moment of silence, but this Sunday, September 8th, at the 1:00 Fire Police Facility.
Thank you, Chief.
Thank you.
Larry Forsberg.
Good evening, everybody. My name is Larry Forsberg, I'm with the Westmont Chamber of Commerce and Tourism Bureau, and I'm here on behalf of the Westmont Chamber and the Westmont Park District to remind everybody of the upcoming, the second annual upcoming Westmont Pet Promenade and Picnic in the Park. It's going to be held September 14th from 10:00 AM to 2:00 PM at beautiful Tiwaner Park. We have 30 vendors that are going to be out there, all pet-related. Last year, we had a wonderful time, and I think we're going to replicate that with even more participants in the parade. We also have a couple celebrity judges, such as Tammy Sousa from WFLD-TV, our own village trustee, Sue Seneca, and we're just going to have a wonderful time out there. So why don't we remind everybody to come out. One of the wonderful things about living in Westmont or visiting Westmont are great community events, and this is just another great example of an opportunity to come out with your family and have a great time. So again, September 14th from 10:00 AM to 2:00 PM. For further information, simply go to westmontchamber.com, and all the details and the schedule of activities are available there, so.
And Larry, could you also, we had a ribbon-cutting ceremony yesterday for a new business in town, could you?
I'll be happy to talk about that. We had a wonderful turnout yesterday for a new business, Chavla Orthodontics. They're located at 5, excuse me, 519 North Cass Avenue. That's the office building immediately south of Walgreens. They have the entire fourth floor that they've opened up in orthodontics practice. They moved from Oakbrook Shopping Center here to Westmont, and it is just absolutely beautiful. I'll encourage everybody to stop by, they're going to have another open house on Saturday. Those hours are going to be from noon to 5:00. Stop on in, introduce yourself, and this is open to the general public, it's open to everybody. Father and son have opened this practice, it's been a vision and a dream of theirs for years, and when you walk in there, you will be very impressed. They'll be getting a lot of referrals from other dentists in the areas who basically send patients there who need special treatments in orthodontics. So a great addition to our business community, and we're very proud to have them.
And they actually purchased the whole building, they're looking to renovate, they've started renovation, and they want to rent additional space.
Exactly. So if anybody's looking for a little bit of office space, basically you can contact us at the chamber, and we'll make that connection for you. Thank you.
Thank you. Is that anyone else for open forum? If, that's it? So we will close open forum and move on to reports. First one is my report, the mayor, and I'd like to welcome Ms., she's in the audience, is it Elektra Chanko? And you're from the Daughters of the American Revolution, who is here to receive the Constitution Week proclamation, and I'd ask manager Searle to please read that.
Excuse me, a proclamation declaring September 17th through 23rd, 2013, is Constitution Week, whereas September 17, 2013, marks the 226th anniversary of the drafting of the Constitution of the United States of America by the Constitutional Convention, and whereas it is fitting and proper to accord official recognition to this magnificent document and its memorable anniversary and to the patriotic celebration which will commemorate the occasion, and whereas public law 915 guarantees the issuing of a proclamation each year by the President of the United States of America designating September 17th through 23rd as Constitution Week, now therefore, I, Ronald J. Gunther, by virtue of the authority vested in me as mayor of the village of Westmont, along with the Westmont Village Board of Trustees, do hereby proclaim the week of September 17th through 23rd, 2013, as Constitution Week, and ask our citizens to reaffirm the ideals the framers of the Constitution had in 1787 by vigilantly protecting the freedoms guaranteed to us through this guardian of our liberties, remembering that lost rights may never be regained. In witness thereof, I hereunto set my hand and cause a seal of the village of Westmont to be affixed this 50th day of the ninth month of the year, our Lord, 2013.
I'd like to present this to you this evening.
Thank you so much.
Thank you for coming. You've got to come up here. I'll give you an opportunity. Why don't you say?
Mayor, Village Council, the Downers Grove Chapter, Daughters of the American Revolution, which also covers the town of Westmont, we thank you so much for this proclamation and for bringing it to the citizens' attention. Thanks again.
Thank you. And I do have to say, on the technicality, we're officially going to vote on it in a minute, but we know it's, we know we're all voting for it, so. Another item I have that's on, later on the agenda under unfinished business is the Westmont First Committee, and this is a committee that I am going to officially appoint at our next regular meeting, but tonight, I'm going to ask trustee Barker, who is chairing that committee, and I think there's a complete agreement amongst the board, it's going to, it's 100% approval. We're going to ask you to please introduce, first tell us a little bit about Westmont First, and then introduce your committee members, who will be officially appointed two weeks from now, and they do not have to come back. So, go ahead.
Thank you, Mayor. I would like to talk a little bit about how Westmont First developed, and it was an organization that I thought would be a positive impact on the town of Westmont. It basically has three components at this, at this time. One is to have any resident or businesses that would like to participate, but to volunteer in our community. We have a long history here in Westmont of volunteer service with all the different events that we have, with all the different clubs and organizations that we have, and we're encouraging those residents of Westmont to sign up and volunteer some of their time. I've challenged them to five hours a year. You know, if everybody in Westmont volunteered five hours a year, we'd only have one thing to do all year, you know, but that's not the case. So I'm asking everybody to volunteer for something in our community. The second component is a, is a idea of shopping locally, spending your dollars, you know, I sent it in an email to some of the members that, you know, Westmont carries gas, it carries groceries, we have automobiles. All of that brings tax revenue to the village of Westmont. It helps pay for the things that we need as far as services or things that we're trying to do here in the community. So we're encouraging people to shop locally, we're encouraging the businesses to look to other businesses and shop locally, because they have greater buying power than a lot of the residents. So that's one, another aspect of it. And finally, the third piece is to take an interest and really get involved in your community. And we, also in Westmont, we have a history of that. The Board of Trustees has volunteered, you know, for the most part, the number of hours that are put in, Westmont Special Events, the number of hours that they put in, different organizations in that way. There is a Stormwater Committee that is chaired by trustee Nero. It's a citizens' group that volunteer their time to look at solutions to stormwater issues here in town. In the past, we had an organization that did recommendation for the TIF districts in the Central Business District as well as the South Business District, and we're looking to have people get involved actively in their community. So that's the components of the Westmont First. I was lucky enough to talk about this to several people as I campaigned, but as I, you know, have developed this idea in my head, and I reached out to a number of people that I've invited to be a core team. So the core team is comprised of, and this is what I'm asking the mayor to appoint, is this core team of people from the town to steer this group, because the fact of the Westmont First organization, you can register online as a business, and you can register online as a resident, and everybody that registers is now a member. So we have an organization, I think we have 40 or 50 people signed up already, we have a number of businesses signed up already, and they believe in this idea of Westmont First. So they get the communications from the organization and the benefits, and the benefits are growing and developing as we move along. But their members, the core team are people that represent different aspects of the community, who try to cover the entire community. So we went north up to Pasquenelli Drive, we went to Ogden Avenue, we went to the Central Business District, we went to the South TIF District, we went to different neighborhoods and different organizations and asked for representatives. So it's all-encompassing, and the idea is that it reaches everybody, and that's what we want to do, is take it out and get everybody that would take an interest in these three different components to get involved in this organization. As I see it, it's all positive, it's all good stuff, and I encourage everybody to sign up, I encourage everybody to, you know, read the information, and I encourage everybody to try to spread that message. You know, it's not my organization, it's our organization, and I want the, you know, the businesses and the residents of Westmont, as well as the local government, to partner in this and make it as good as it can be. So that's the program, Westmont First, and I'd like, you know, it's a, it's a privilege to introduce, we have some of the core team members here this evening, I'd like to call them up, and I'm going to name them all, and then the ones that are here, I'm going to ask them to come up from the audience and join me up in front here, and the mayor was kind enough to allow us an opportunity to speak, if anybody would like to speak. The first person that I have is, I don't know where it faces--
Go to the mic.
Go to the mic.
Go to the mic.
The first person is Mr. Al Kohut from Al K Media, and he's representing the Central TIF District. We're happy to have Al involved in this program. The next one is Mr. Jim Long with Long Realty up on Ogden Avenue, and also a, Al is here.
I'm here.
All right. Jim Long from Long Realty, and also a Westmont Park District board member for a lot of years.
30 years.
30 years, so he's got great involvement in the community. Jim Wright from the village staff, and Linda Little from Westmont Special Events, Linda is here. Adam Smorkowski representing his neighborhood in Holy Trinity Church, Adam is here. Gary Armstrong from School District 201, Gary is unavailable this evening. Steve Galimbuski from Westmont Park District. Renee Moomi, Renee said yes, right?
I just represent Young Moms.
Young Moms, perfect.
Specifically young.
Young Moms, okay, and we're glad to have Renee. She's also involved in Westmont Renaissance Alliance, so we have that connection as well. And myself. Now, we're still looking for, we're still looking for somebody from the South TIF District, we're looking for somebody from Pasquenelli Drive, and we're looking for somebody from School District 58. And if we get those three people, we've covered the town pretty well. But then again, we're inviting everybody from the Westmont businesses and everybody as residents to join this organization.
And again, your core group will be officially appointed, your committee by me, next meeting, and then this committee will be the group that'll guide those volunteers and make sure that all your dreams are real, become real.
Our dreams.
Our dreams. Well, that was your idea, but our dreams.
And again, if anybody, if anybody who is here that have volunteered, if anybody here would like to take an opportunity to say anything, if, you don't have to, but if you like, it has to be on this issue, Jim. I told him he's welcome to come and talk, but--
I'll speak. I think most of you know who I am, I'm Al from, Al Kohut from Al K Media. Our business is established in 1979, we've been a long-time business in Westmont most of those years, well over 20 years. We own a building downtown, so we have a real vested interest downtown and in the community as well. When trustee Barker came up to me and asked me to be a part of this, I was actually honored, somewhat bewildered, that I couldn't know what role I could play, but I'm a real big fan, even though we've been around for 34 years, I'm a big fan of business and small business, and especially shopping local. So I vow to you, and all of you as well, and the people out there, that I'll do my part as well to endorse this and do what I can. Thank you for allowing me to do that.
Yeah, absolutely. Thank you, Al.
And Jim, you've been in here longer. When did you start your business? You get to be on camera and come up to the microphone, there you go.
My business was started in 1978, and I have a 23-foot-tall sign. That's--
I knew it.
No, I, back to this committee. I'm happy to work with Bruce, I think it's a great idea, and I will do everything I can from my business district to support and get people to get involved. Thank you.
Great. Thank you.
Good evening. I'm Renee Moomi, I am part of the Westmont Renaissance Alliance, but also a young mom. And the Westmont Renaissance Alliance is a group of citizens of Westmont that are really just about promoting the development and the growth, and kind of a rebirth of our downtown Central Business District. And then, because our belief is, if you can, you know, build from a core, things will come out of that, and things will grow from there. It's really about being in between local government, the local businesses, and the residents. With that said, I'm also, like I said, have a young family, and really believe that if we get more young families from our community involved in what is a great community, but can be an amazing, amazing village and town. I think there's so much potential here that I just want to see this town flourish, I want to see the schools flourish, and I want to see more and more young families move to our town. I think that Westmont First is going to do it. Thanks.
Linda, or Adam? No? Adam.
I'm Adam Smorkowski, I'm a resident of Westmont for about, I don't know, 22 years or so, and also a member of the Holy Trinity Parish for about 22 years. And I, and it's really neat to represent them, because there's over 1,500 families in that parish, and most of them do live in Westmont and are very active, so I think their involvement in this will be a crucial part of the success of Westmont. So I'm excited to be a part of that when Bruce asks me. It was awesome. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, what we'd like to do then is just get a quick picture, Larry's got the camera, if you guys can get together, and then we can move on. And trustee Barker has the first meeting is next Tuesday?
Yes. At One Westmont Center at 7:00 PM. We invite, whether you're registered or not, we invite you to come and check that out. The agenda has been posted, and I do have some copies here, if anybody would like one, but it's exciting because it's our first official open meeting, and we want to bring in more people, share some core team ideas that we have, and really get this thing moving here in Westmont, so exciting times.
7, you said, right?
7:00 PM, One Westmont Center.
Very good.
Thank you.
Congratulations, Bruce.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. I have a couple more items. One is, this Saturday, the Coffee at the Mayor will be at the library, and that'll start at ten o'clock, and everybody's encouraged and welcome to stop by. Bruce will be there talking about Westmont First, and I know, I think Greg Pill's gonna be there representing the chamber to answer some questions about development up in that area. So again, anybody who would like to come to the library and also probably give a tour of the library that same day, please do. Two other items, one is, I'd like the, an idea I had that came up to a couple of local businesses have relocated or thought about expanding, and that we, we can, we charge additional fees either for signage or for permitting, and I'd like the Building and Zoning Committee to review that, because I'm thinking maybe we should seriously consider what we charge to an existing business that wants to grow. I know for a fact one business has decided not to because of some of the fees and costs that they may incur. So I'm just encouraging the Building and Zoning Committee maybe to put that on your agenda and address that, so maybe we can come back to the board and review it. And again, the last item I have is I'd like to call the Director of our Fire Prevention Bureau, Larry Hoffman, and Larry's gonna give us an update on our fire alarm systems.
Good evening, everyone here I believe has a copy of the short synopsis I put together just for an update of what's going on with the fire alarm monitoring as well as the fire alarm systems here in Westmont. As you can see, we're progressing forward, just as we anticipated. We're trying to work with businesses and make it as painless as possible, and we're getting pretty good response. I guess I would open it up to the board if they have any specific questions, I'd be happy to answer them.
I do have one question. Of the two businesses and the B1 that have just not even answered letters, and how are we handling those? Are we enforcing a fine on them? I mean, if they're not even willing to answer an email or a letter, there needs to be action.
Yeah, first of all, in everyone's defense of people, these nine, or seven businesses who have not answered, it may be a simple miscommunication that we're sending it somewhere and it's getting passed along to like a business owner or what they perceive as the responsible party, and so we're trying to solve those problems internally. The last thing we're gonna do right now is enforce through fines and citations, that's not our goal, our goal is compliance. So, and you know, typically in fire prevention, it's an ongoing process, and the way we handle it is by trying to figure out what's going on and dealing with them. So those last seven, eventually there'll be some communication, and we just need to see where they sit.
And Larry, aren't you guys backlogged a little bit right now with so many people coming into compliance as far as getting things done and getting meetings set and that kind of thing? It's been a little difficult.
Yeah, I mean, you know, the amount of alarms that have come in, there is a sort of a backlog, but I mean, it's nothing that can't be handled, it's a matter of communication, that's really what it's coming down to.
So is it a matter of not knowing who to send the letter to? Do we know the building owners? I mean, I think that's pretty serious when they blatantly, if, if they're blatantly ignoring it, it needs to be addressed one way or the other.
Yeah.
This is not new, this has been going on for like six, seven years.
It has been.
So I'm kinda hard-nosed about it, so.
One of my favorite lines is everyone deserves a fifth, sixth, and seventh chance. So, I mean, in this instance, my experience with businesses or people who have just outright refused, it's been, it's not usually as nefarious as it seems. And typically, it always comes down to some kind of confusion on their part. An example is, one of the people, this, that number was two weeks ago higher by four, and the people who hadn't even answered basically were done, they just never communicated with us, and to no fault of their own, the contractors had not quite followed procedures, so it was a matter of backtracking it out and figuring it out. And I have a real strong feeling that those last seven are gonna kind of be that same. There may be one or two that are not, but it'll be figured out.
We can actually knock on their door and do an inspection and know, right?
That is part of it also, too, and that is also part of the communication process, yes.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions, comments?
No. Thank you.
And again, if there's any questions about any of this stuff, I would ask that, you know, emails directly to myself or Chief Weiss are the best way to go directly to the source, we're always happy to answer it. Everyone here has my cell number, no problem answering those questions.
Thank you, Larry.
Thanks for your time.
Okay, that's all I have, Clerk Simmski.
The only thing I have today is I want to congratulate the special events commission on, the commission, whatever you guys are, on their fabulous street fair this summer. It turned out to be just a wonderful experience for everybody, families, and I think you should be proud, all of you, that were involved in that. I encourage you to do the same thing next year. And also, I'm gonna encourage everybody to come to our 9/11 ceremony on Sunday at one o'clock. It's emotional, but it's always well worth it, and it makes us remember that horrible, horrible day that none of us will ever forget anyway, so. And that's all I have tonight, thank you.
Attorney Zemina.
Nothing to report tonight, thanks.
Thank you. Manager Searle.
Yes, I wanted to invite to the podium Kathy Casey, our HR Director, who's been involved in the event that many people are aware of, because it's been an event here the last several years, the St. Jude Race to the Flag. They've been here in the past after the event to kind of give a recap of the success of the event, and asked if they could do so again this evening, so I'll let Kathy.
I'd like to invite Mike Ramsey and the rest of our committee.
Okay, y'all know I'm Mike Ramsey, I'm lucky enough and have a great privilege to be the Chair of this wonderful committee, St. Jude Race to the Flag 5K. This is our fourth year of having the race, and I'm here tonight to discuss some of the highlights from this past year's race in 2013.
It's not working.
I can read. There it goes, is that working now? Yeah, there we go. That's all right, I can, now we're just flying through this. Don't look. Again, I'm here to discuss the great highlights from 2013, I mean, we had a fantastic day, couldn't ask for better weather day for the race. Why is this thing not working?
Just hit escape.
There we go, there we go, whoops, go back one. Okay, as you can see, we had three hundred and eighty-five participants for the race. It was a great, like I said, it was a great event, we were able to raise eleven thousand one hundred and seventy-seven dollars for St. Jude's Children's Research Hospital, and the Lions Club with the help of Mayor Ron Gunther, he, how many pancakes he made that day, but he was out there from five o'clock that morning until we left at eleven o'clock the afternoon, you know, almost in the afternoon, we were able to raise thirteen hundred and twenty-three dollars from the pancake breakfast, to get to a grand total of twelve thousand five hundred dollars, which was a great amount of money. I was really, really proud of how much money we were able to raise from this event. Again, you know, we had a lot of people turn out, I was really impressed by how many people showed up, because all week beforehand, they kept saying, oh, it's gonna be great weather, great weather, and then the day before, they kept forecasting thunderstorms, so I was really happy with how many people turned out. Why is this thing not working? I'm bringing my own laptop next to me. There we go, okay. And then this year, we had a new program that was started up, Nancy Tannehill, one of our chair, Chairman on our committee, had this great idea talking to St. Jude about having a championship program. And what this program's all about is, anybody can sign up and raise money on their own for this great event, and they can raise their money, they can create their own page on a website, and by doing this, as they raise money, they can earn prizes. And all the, all the money they raise goes toward St. Jude, so it's just a win-win on everybody's, you know, in everybody's case there, it just, it worked out great. I mean, you know, people got to get more involved, it was just a great community involvement with everybody doing this championship program, and it just worked out great for the first year, and we were able to raise just under two thousand dollars. So our grand total was just under fifteen thousand dollars this year. So it was the most money we've ever raised, so I was very, very happy with this new program. See, every time I click on it, it will not go. I'm just better off just reading.
Oh my, that looks serious.
All right, don't look at that. All right, I'm just gonna keep going, because we're gonna be here all night if I don't keep going here.
There we go.
All right, all right, here we go. Okay, yeah, that'd probably be better. Okay. As Trustee Barker mentioned earlier, you know, volunteers are everything, you know, and we have such great volunteers, and that's one thing I liked about this race is that the whole community of Westmont's involved. I mean, I have a list of people to thank here, I mean, we have the Village of Westmont, the Westmont Park District, all the great volunteers that get there at four-thirty, quarter to five every morning of the day of the race, to start setting up the race course, to get the, just get everything organized for all the runners to show up, to run the tents, and just, it's just unbelievable, all the people we have, how many volunteers we have this year, fifty?
About sixty-five.
Sixty-five volunteers show up on their day off, on a Sunday of a holiday, to come out and help with this event. EMA, again, you know, Greg Pankie does such a great job with EMA, they do such a great job directing traffic and blocking out the roads so everybody's safe, I, big thank you to EMA. Westmont Police, Chief Mohern out there every year, I give him, I give him credit, he's out there every single year, you know, starting the race, we use, we use him as a starter pistol and, okay, because nobody else wants to carry guns.
He's also a pass participant.
And pass participant, yes, and he does shoot it, and he doesn't shoot at anybody, he actually shoots them here, so that's good. Westmont Fire Department, again, you know, we have people there in case somebody gets hurt, the fire department's there to take care of them. Chamber of Commerce, Larry Forsberg does a fantastic job promoting the race every year, you know, he's, without him, we wouldn't have half as many runners as we get. Again, the Lions Club, they did such a great job with the pancake breakfast, the Westmont High School, we get students that are getting involved, they donate food every year for the runners, they, they're just a fantastic organization to work with. Oakwoods Homers Association, Greg Pill and others in Oakwood, just, they come out and they support. Last year, going around, people were handing out water, you know, clapping, cheering people on, I mean, they just do a great job supporting this race, and I'm really proud that we, that we run through that homeowners associat, you know, homeowners area, because it's just fantastic that when they come out. And again, you know, we couldn't do any of this without our sponsors. It's not gonna work, push that button?
Not a word.
There we go, okay. This year, we had over thirty sponsors, and again, we couldn't, we need that sponsorship to help support this race, and every year, they just come out in droves and they, they're just fantastic, and without them, you know, we wouldn't be able to put on this race.
You should mention Jill.
Oh, Jill, right, Jill Peterson does a fantastic job every year, getting sponsors, going around, sending out letters, going door to door, you know, raising money, she did a fantastic job this year, she did, just outstanding. And finally, but not lastly, I want to thank this great committee of ours, they've done a fantastic job for the last four years. Kathy is our Finance Director, I guess, on our committee. Treasurer. Greg is just fantastic, Greg Pill, he's been with us every, all four years. Nancy Tannehill does a grand, fantastic job. Kim Lajuski, or Baxter, sorry, sorry about that, fantastic job.
And John.
John doesn't, John, he works harder, I think, than anybody, sometimes walking up and down the streets, getting people involved, John does a great job, so. So just ending all this, for four years now, we've raised over forty-two thousand dollars. So like I said, the best part of this, you know, event is, you know, just the community, everybody gets involved, all parts of Westmont's involved in this event, and like what Trustee Barker was trying to build on, this is a great event to get everybody in the community involved, and I hope his new committee has the same success that we have with this race, so.
And I just wanted to mention, these pictures were taken actually from Memphis this year. I had the pleasure of going to visit St. Jude this, this summer and had a personal tour, and what an interesting piece of information I found out this year was that not only does St. Jude share their protocols with other countries, but they send their doctors there to make sure that the other countries learn how to use them and administer them. So that's really outstanding.
Any questions or any comments you wanna?
Yes, we did receive a letter from the Vice President of Volunteer Event Operations, and I just wanted to share that with the board, if you wanted to.
Sure. Dear Ms. Casey and the Race to the Flag 5K Committee, on behalf of all the children and families of St. Jude Children's Research Hospital, I want to know how much we appreciate your support and efforts. The lives of countless children with this catastrophic, I'm sorry, catastrophic diseases have been transformed by the work taking place here. We could not accomplish these without your help of people like you. Our kids, the family, our staff are so grateful for all that you do for St. Jude. It's one thing to have a dream after all, most people would agree with that. No children should die in the dawn of their life. It's another thing to do the work necessary to clear out those dreams. Your support and efforts through the Race to the Flag 5K shows you understand, that you understand that. While children throughout the world still threatened by catastrophic diseases, the good news is we are winning our fight. Cure rates continue to climb, and advances in science and technology are leading us to believe that we could make historic advancements in the near future. But this progress will not be possible if you did not have the people like you championed, I'm sorry, like you, you champion our cause. Since 2007, we have raised thirty thousand two hundred and thirty-nine dollars and seventy cents to support the lifesaving work we are doing. We appreciate your hard work for the 2013 event, and we cannot wait to see the results. We are looking forward to you again, seeing you again in 2014 and in the future. On behalf of all our family, thank you for your generosity.
And I just wanted to mention that one of the things that they mentioned to me was that Danny Thomas had said that, he felt that it was his philosophy that they could never do this without the continuous small donations that they receive, and he, they felt that, that they are able to sustain the hospital through these continuous small donations that they receive. And I came back and mentioned that to the committee because, you know, sometimes they don't realize that the hard work that all of these small fundraisers that go on throughout the United States is really what sustains St. Jude. It is completely donation-supported, and it costs over a million dollars a day for them to keep their operations going. And so I just want to, again, as Mike said, you know, just thank everybody that's involved, and thank the Village of Westmont for allowing us to continue on with this event.
I think what you're, what you're forgetting is that you provide a lot more than that to the community. Not only are you raising funds for a very worthwhile cause, you are promoting health and fitness, and your race has done that, and you do more in the community than just the race, the race is your major event, but I think you've now made an awareness, you get more people now coming out on Memorial Day Sunday as families to participate. So I think that in itself has been a huge accomplishment, so. And I know Greg used to run a race around pretty much the same area, and his expertise is, is well-welcome, and I know that John, he's still with us, has been involved in everything. And again, I commend you guys for all the hard work you've done, and we look forward to next year, so. I don't know if anybody else has? No? Again, thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Manager Searle, while you're still on.
That is all I have.
Trustees, well, trustee Seneca.
I just, kind of a housekeeping, did we ask for the executive session?
I.
We're not having one.
Oh, we're not having it?
I was gonna, yeah, I think we're going to have that as the beginning of another meeting, we're gonna do it as a workshop, committee meeting.
Thank you, thank you. No, the only thing I have is I want to congratulate Tim Horman and Urban Legend on their opening officially of the brewery, it opened a few weeks ago on a Friday. Their beer is very Their beer is very local, it's made here, it's sold from Westmont, it'll be bottled in Westmont. Tap House has some, Sweet and Savory has had it, Neat Restaurant has had it. It's just, it's really, really cool to have something like that in our community. So congratulations to him and his partners, and thank you for choosing Westmont. And go to one of our local restaurants that's serving this beer, enjoy a dinner, and try the wonderful craft beer. And then I too wanted to congratulate the WSEC on a fabulous year. They wrapped up last night with a joint meeting with the board. Very, very impressive what these volunteers have done. They give hours and hours and hours. I mean, they use their vacation time. You know, some go to work at four in the morning, and then they work at cruising nights till like nine o'clock at night. So it's really, really wonderful. And it was great to see some of our businesses attended the meeting. And I'd like to thank our businesses for embracing this idea and capitalizing on it to better their businesses and to bring people into Westmont first. And that's all I have. Thank you.
Trustee Barker.
Couple of things. I wanted to also congratulate Westmont Special Events. A note from my daughter, she went to every single night of the street fair. And I absolutely thought it was great, but really enjoyed that, so we're bringing people in from out of town. And I wanted to, again, invite everybody over to the 9/11 ceremony on Sunday. Since we've had those events, I've missed one. Every year, it's something different, and it is, last year was exceptional. And I'm looking forward to that this weekend as well. And then finally, Holy Trinity is, as some of you may know, is having their 75th Jubilee. There is a dinner on October 19th. We're inviting those, anybody that would like to join us in our celebration, 75 years as a parish here in Westmont. For the Jubilee, we were able to set the price of the dinner at the Abington at $75 a person. And I wanted to promise everybody that there were no additional raffles. It's just a dinner, a nice orchestra.
It's church. They can't have it.
This might be the first time there's no additional raffles, but please join us. Please join us for that event. So thank you.
Thank you. Trustee Nero.
The only thing I want to add is kind of, I feel like tonight's been very positive, is keep the positive vibe going. And I want to introduce tonight, what I've talked about at a previous meeting, is our rain barrel promotion. It's a pilot program we're gonna run through the end of November. I'd like to call up Mike Ramsey and Larry to kind of help explain it and give everybody all the details. But I really think it's a great addition to this village, another good program that we're gonna hopefully keep going with gangbusters here and get a lot of residents, the ones that haven't bought a rain barrel yet, hopefully get them in their yards and their houses and the schools and the businesses. Turn it over to you guys.
I promise no slides. But, yeah, it's a fantastic program. The rain barrel program, actually, we started about 2011, and we just didn't really promote it. It was kind of word of mouth. And we sold, you know, I'd say I got sold about a dozen rain barrels. And, but now, with this new stormwater committee, it's just taken off. I've had at least 60 calls in the last two weeks about this program. It's fantastic, everybody's excited about it. And there are so many benefits, you know, to this rain barrel program, not only for stormwater issues, but water conservation. I mean, we all know that the cost of utilities are not going down, you know, whether it's water, whether it's gas, whether it's electric, phone, whatever, you know, we all have to burden that cost. And this is one way, you know, you can conserve a little bit of water and use it for watering your gardens or whatever you need to water your yard, whatever you need to use the water for. It's a simple process. You can come to the Village of Westmont and Community Development Department, fill out a form for the rain barrel, put your information down, write a check to the village, and we'll be more than happy to drop off the rain barrels to your home. There's four colors we're gonna be having, terracotta, black, blue, and gray. So you have multiple choices there of which one you'd like. And like I said, we'll be more than happy to drop them off to your house directly, so you don't have to worry about how you're gonna get it home, because it's a large 55-gallon barrel, it's not small. And I'll let you talk more about the current program that came up.
Sure. Through our Stormwater Management Committee, our residents have been trying to encourage initiatives like this and said that maybe more people would participate if we could offer a discount. So through mid-November, we're gonna be offering basically a two-for-one type of program. It's a half-price discount, so it's $35 per water barrel. And publicity on that will come out tomorrow, and people can download that form online, they'll be able to fill that out, send it in, and then as soon as we receive the order and the payment, then the Water Division will take care of getting it out to you.
And then, do you guys give like an instruction as far as how they're supposed to use it? Because I've put a couple hundred in over our period of time, and there's a lot of tricks and most people don't realize you need to take them out for the winter. And hopefully that people understand that going in, because they do freeze and break. And they also need to be gravity-fed. So they need to be elevated off the ground. And if that is pointed out to the residents, most people have trouble with them because there's no gravity from them to be, you know, elevated and have that flow. So hopefully we have some kind of guidance for them.
Well, I've been working closely with the Conservation Foundation in Naperville, and they gave us a brochure to hand out to the residents. Currently, we only have it in a fold, in a pamphlet form. We need to probably get that on our website soon, so people who go just order on the website can also look at, see exactly how they should install it. But if you do go into Community Development, they do have the forms, the pamphlets right next to the forms. So if you do come into the village, you'll be able to get a form that way, a pamphlet that way to explain it. But we'll work on getting that on the website. So you're right, it's not as easy as you think sometimes. There is a trick to the trade, you're right. So that's a good point.
Do you have to be a resident of Westmont?
Yes.
I'm incorporated, though, your town should.
Unfortunately, yeah, this program is being subsidized by the village, for village residents.
I believe the county also does have a program. The county does have a program under court block.
By now.
Well, no.
Follow-up of Trustee Barry's comment about education regarding installation and so forth, we're also gonna be, starting next week, reaching out to the local schools. And we're gonna supply, we're gonna offer each of the schools a water barrel and come in, show them how to do the installation, and talk about water conservation. And so that's also part of the educational aspect of this particular program.
Just, the $35 is below our cost. Our intent is to get them out in the community and have people use them and showcase them a little bit, so.
So each person that lives in the village or has a business in the village can buy up to two at $35 a pop. So it's a really nice deal, and I think, hopefully a lot of people take advantage of it. It's a good cause.
And one more thing I want to add is, I had a meeting today at the Page Water Commission. They have been really advocates of conservation, water conservation since 2009. And they want to make the Village of Westmont an example of conservation program, exactly what a village should be doing to conserve water and promote conservation throughout the town, and talk about stormwater. And I haven't gotten a chance to talk to you about this, but today it was pretty exciting. And so I'll fill you in more later. But it's something that I think it's gonna really benefit the Village of Westmont. So I was really excited when they asked us to be like the pilot for this program that they're gonna be doing, so.
Thank you.
Thank you.
That's all you have. Let's go over to the Trustee Barry.
I'd like to piggyback what everyone else said about the WSEC. We just had a great year. The street fair was just overwhelming success, and thank all those volunteers and everyone for their efforts. Secondly, I'd like to congratulate a friend and fellow businesswoman and invite the community out to DJ's Sports Bar. Tracy Valerio is celebrating her 20th anniversary. And since the time Tracy has opened, she has been a role model of how a business should come into a community. She's been very active, from Race to the Flag to Rotary to probably 100 different events that she's been active with. So she's having a luau this Saturday at 4:00, and she encourages everyone to come. And again, congratulations to Tracy and her staff.
Thank you. Trustee Addington.
A couple of things. First one is, and I've mentioned this to Steve May already, there's a new house that's going up, and I think the address is 411 North Warwick. It's right in the middle of the serious flooding problems. And they're starting to degrade in landscape. And what I'm seeing is that the landscaping or the grating of the ground is sloping directly into both neighbors' areas pretty severely. So I've asked Steve to look at that, because we know there's problems there already, and, you know, the last thing we need is to just throw water onto the neighbors'. It's a nice house, but that's not the way I think we want to leave it. So please, let's follow up on that if we can. And, so, because I was out walking this morning, and the neighbor's cornered me and says, "Look what they're doing", you know. You know how it goes. The other thing I have is, and this is probably more for Ron, I see that the DuPage Convention is having their annual meeting and lunch. Is anybody from the village going, Ron, do you know? If not, I'll go. As a representative, because I don't know if we have anybody, if we had or not.
What was the date again?
That is Thursday, September the 12th.
Of course, Larry's back there in the back, and we responded to him. I think I'm going.
Okay. I mean, we're members, as long as somebody from the village is there, you know.
Our official representative is Larry Forsberg at the chamber, and I know he extended an invitation. I don't know if you want to comment on it. I can't remember, Mayor, if you were available for that date?
I think that day, I'm not available.
We do have a table reserved for that event, and we do have openings at the table. And any or all the trustees are invited to join us on that day. Just let me know.
Okay.
Sounds like Trustee Addington just raised his hand first.
Can I piggyback in on that? Yeah, I'll send you an email. Thank you. The other thing is, and I know since I sat on this board before, we've changed a lot how we handle things with the Yellinham Misspaly Annual Conference, which is in October. Can we go to that? Is any of it, is there any reimbursement for any of the conferences? I know you guys have all changed that around, so, because of the severe financial problems that we've had.
We've been paying for it ourselves, probably, what, the last two or three years now?
Right. Okay.
Yeah, it's our own expense.
And, yeah, it's been at least three years, hasn't it?
I think it's been longer.
It's actually longer, I think for a while, we paid for just the registration.
Yeah, that was my curiosity, you know, getting there and back would be us, but would, you know, did the village pay for registration? I know way back when, we were covering all the expenses, but that was a different time and situation. But you're saying not even registration's covered?
No, we paid for it.
Okay.
Yeah, it's been...
And then the last thing I have is, I will not be here. I've already informed the mayor, I will not be here at the next meeting. I will be in Overland Park, Kansas, for what the Lions call the USA/Canda Forum. That's an annual event that takes place somewhere in the United States or Canada every year. I've been a presenter at that. It's two and a half days of seminars and sessions. So I will be in Overland Park, Kansas on the 19th, actually, I'll be there the 18th to the 22nd, so.
You're not gonna piggyback any barbecue.
And actually, yeah, the Kansas City Barbecue Society's home office is there. So I have a luncheon date with the Executive Director of the Kansas City Barbecue Society, Carolyn Wells, on the 18th. I've talked to her on the phone 9,000 times, I've never met her, so it gives me a chance to meet the people in the office that we work with all the time but never meet. And so I'm looking forward to that. So, and the only other thing is, I know we had mentioned one time before, and I don't think it came out, was there was some, there was a question that was raised about coming up with some of the costs with regards to the land we own at 63rd Street. And I thought we were gonna follow up with that and get a, just kind of give everybody an update. And I didn't see it, but then maybe I missed it.
Yeah, we have put together, you're talking about the costs?
Yeah.
And what we have left to pay off.
Yeah. And just what it cost us in maintenance and all that kind of stuff, you know? Just an idea where we're at.
Yeah, there really hasn't been a lot of maintenance. I think that was the answer to that question. We've actually used the site on a couple of occasions to dump snow. I think beyond that, you know, as Steve, have you really done anything down there?
I think Steve, you mentioned that they weren't even cutting the grass.
In terms of maintenance?
No, there is no, there's no periodic maintenance at all. Actually, it's just natural. And then, other than the snow storage, that's the only function we've ever used on that parcel.
Maybe in the Friday report, can we just include the acquisition cost and date?
Yeah, we distributed that before, but we'll be happy to do that.
Yeah, I mean, for us, the new ones that weren't involved, so we can have it in our records.
Appreciate it. And that's all I have, so.
It's all Trustee Scott.
Nothing this evening.
All right, then, we will actually move into Agenda Item 6, the items to be removed from the consent agenda. Do any of the board members want any item removed from the consent agenda? If not, I will ask Manager Searle to please read.
Okay, so, for those at home who are watching or may be listening, the following items are on the consent agenda. We have, of course, the Constitution Week proclamation.
We should do that as a separate...
We do that separately?
Let's do that first.
Okay.
And then you'll do the consent agenda. So actually, the Constitution Week proclamation that we've already presented, officially, we need to have a motion to pass that proclamation and a vote on it.
So move Seneca? Oh, second Seneca?
Motion had been made and seconded to approve the proclamation for Constitution Week on the question. If not, roll call, please.
Trustee Scott.
Yes.
Trustee Barry.
Yes.
Trustee Addington.
Yes.
Trustee Seneca.
Yes.
Trustee Nero.
Yes.
Trustee Barker.
Yes.
Thank you. Now I'll ask Manager Searle to read the consent agenda.
Just one question I have, we have another proclamation on there. Do you want me to go down the items and then read that before you actually vote? For the public's information, there's another proclamation that's on the...
Well, I'm silent because I'm letting the attorney answer that one.
Oh, it's just for information.
Yeah, should we?
You don't have to.
Yeah.
In the past, it was oftentimes done during the Monday voting meeting, we'd actually read it for public awareness.
What's the board's pleasure? I'll be happy to read it.
It's...
Please.
I think it would be a good one to read, especially for the students and...
What I'll do is I'll go down each of the items and I'll come back, read the proclamation, and then you vote.
And just along those same lines, when we have a proclamation, do we, is that visible on the website? I mean, is there a link to all the proclamations?
Part of the packet.
So the residents could actually look at it again if they wanted to?
They could.
Okay, great, thank you.
Okay, so the items that we have on the consent agenda include the board meeting minutes from the August 22nd meeting. Then we have the proclamation that I was referring to, which is called the Drive for Pledges Day, and I'll come back and read that in a moment. Then we have the Finance Ordinance, which totals $656,964.80. And then we have the following purchase orders, PO 11031643 to Gregory Property Development in the amount of $22,106.82. We have purchase order 11031630 to Black Box Network Services in the amount of $8,290. Next, we have PO number 11031732 to the Westmont Park District for $7,898.98. That's our cost-sharing salary that we pay periodically for the landscape architect position. Next, we have the purchase order number 11031670 to Hornick Engineering Systems in the amount of $7,670. Then we have purchase order 11031766, which is to Global Emergency Products in the amount of $6,053. And finally, the last purchase order is 11031713 to Hornick Engineering Systems in the amount of $5,200. The total amount of purchase orders is $57,120.80. And the proclamation that I mentioned earlier reads as follows. Whereas the Village of Westmont holds the health and safety of its teenagers and adults as a chief concern, and whereas Thurekkenwait.com, Facebook, text to pledge, tweet to pledge, and other events, more than 1.8 million people have committed to never text and drive, and whereas 98% of American commuters now sending a text or an email while driving is not safe, and whereas nearly 50% of commuters text while behind the wheel, and whereas more than 40% of commuters who text while driving reportedly the activity as being a habit, as being a habit, I'm sorry, reported the activity as being a habit, and whereas a Virginia text study showed that those who text messages while driving are 23 times more likely to crash, and whereas a driver that sends a text message while driving not only jeopardizes his or her safety, but also the safety of passengers, pedestrians, and other drivers. Now therefore, be it resolved that I, Ronald J. Gunther, do hereby proclaim September 19th, 2013, as Drive for Pledges Day, encouraging all drivers to take the pledge to never text and drive again. Passed and approved by the mayor and the board of trustees, DuPage County, this 5th day of September 2013. That's it. Those are the items.
Any questions? Entertained a motion to approve is presented?
So move Scott.
Second Parker.
On the question, anybody in the audience have a question? Any other trustee? If not, roll call, please.
Trustee Scott?
Yes.
Trustee Barker?
Yes.
Trustee Seneca?
Yes.
Trustee Barry?
Yes.
Trustee Addington?
Yes.
Trustee Newell?
Thank you. And I'm going, um, we've already covered unfinished business. A, what I'd like to do is move up one item under new business before we do unfinished business. B, I'd like to move up ComEd variance approval requests, since we have representatives from ComEd. And it's the Board to consider ordinance granting its own code variance request from ComEd in cooperation with village staff to allow increased fence height in the R4 Residential District. Manager Searle?
This is a variance to allow 10-foot-high board-on-board fence in the front yard of R4 General Residence District, which was tabled in June of 2012 by the village board so staff could meet with ComEd to discuss a more aesthetic solution. We had our landscape plan, we had a landscape plan designed by Village and Park District landscape architect Bob Fleck, which is attached in the packet to show how the fence appearance could be improved with plantings. The poles would still be visible, but the screening is an improvement to the current situation. And after meeting with ComEd and helping design a solution and bringing the discussion to the Public Works Committee, staff recommends approval of fence variation landscaping plan attachment. We have representatives, we have our municipal external affairs representative here, Terry Simmons, and I don't know if you want to invite her to the podium for any comments?
Yes, I would like to, if you'd like to come up. And your, if you have your other rep with ComEd, if you'd like both of you to come up?
Okay, I'm not very good at this.
And again, this location is, what's the common address?
It's, um, the address is 389 North Cass Avenue. And so we're recommending, we're here to request a variance to install the 10-foot fence. There is currently an existing 10-foot fence there. However, we know, we understand that the code allows for a 6-foot fence. And then Ron mentioned the vegetation screening, which is shown on the plan on the monitors that was designed by Mr. Fleck. ComEd agrees to maintain, repair, and replace the fence and the landscaping as needed. And also, we will be meeting with the village to discuss the timing of the installation of the fence and the vegetation once the variance is granted. Any questions?
Good, I think it should, give it a nice look, so.
Appreciate ComEd working with us on this.
Yeah, amen.
Thank you for coming this evening.
Thanks.
It was good dialogue that happened, and we appreciate you coming out.
Thank you, Dan.
And then I would ask to have a motion to approve?
So move.
Second Barry.
Motion was made and seconded on the question. Anybody? If not, roll call, please.
Trustee Addington?
Yes.
Trustee Barry?
Yes.
Trustee Scott?
Yes.
Trustee Barker?
Yes.
Trustee Newell?
Yes.
We will be getting together with staff and we'll be looking at when we want to begin that. Thank you.
Mayor.
Now if we can go back to unfinished business. B, the life safety grant funding increase. Board to consider ordinance amending the facade grant program for the 2013-2014 fiscal year regarding available funding for life safety improvements. We've post-tabled this until this meeting from the previous one. I'd like to call Spencer, Parker, our financial director. He's put together some additional information that we went over this afternoon that would hopefully give the board some additional background information and numbers that might help with the discussion. So Jill, go ahead, you two are once chief finishing handing out the, go ahead, cut it.
He's our guy Friday.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And I'll let Spencer go ahead and you can explain.
Sure, just want to kind of briefly go through what's in the packet and then kind of talk about it. So the first page in the packet is the sheet that is currently on the board. Portions of this are very similar to things that have been distributed to you previously. The top portion, the green section, is very similar to, it's also the last page on the pamphlet that's right there. This is the sheet that was distributed. When you saw it a little bit earlier, it was blue. It's now been changed to green, and it's the top portion of the sheet. So that's this identical information, which is a list of the businesses that have been awarded, downtown development grants, both facade and life safety, over the last couple of years. Then the second section on there, the yellow section, is the list of the businesses that have applied for a downtown development grant for the life safety portion, which are still budgeted. You'll see that one of them, the dentist's office, there's a little note by it, and they actually would be eligible for $2,380. We only have $1,883 left in the budget, and so that's the number that's listed there. And then the section right underneath it, the red section, lists the businesses which have applied, but for which we do not currently have any budgeted funds. And you can see the total there. If all of them were to have, as was discussed at the last meeting, if we were to drop our maximum amount that we would contribute to $1,500, you can see the total there for those that have applied would be $10,288. The difference from what you previously received, some information on this, which was compiled before Bales Hardware had applied, so they're in addition. The second page in your pamphlet is a list of information, answers to some questions. This is similar to what you've received previously. There's been a couple of adjustments. The first change is just that we've indicated in here, prior to fiscal year 2009, you can see that the amount for the facade grant was $50,000. And that was not in your previous information. We just wanted to clarify that and show, before it was reduced due to budget constraints and the fact that we hadn't been spending the full amounts. And then the other changes were just editing and updating the items down at the very bottom of that sheet. Specifically, you know, the biggest change there is adding the Bales Hardware in as well. Then the third item in your pamphlet is just a printed copy of an email that I sent out earlier today, in case you hadn't had a chance to read it. And then the last page, as I mentioned, was the information that was presented previously, but which is identical to the green information. It's a little bit bigger in this format, might be slightly easier to read. So I guess that sort of summarizes what we have. I did also want to mention that you'll see on the green section, there's also a little note by, the first one on the second light green section, Sweet Pea. You'll notice that they had both an amount for facade grant of $1,713, and they also had a $3,000 amount for the fire alarm. The amounts that are listed on here are the amounts that were awarded by the board. So the board passed an ordinance authorizing them, to give them this grant for up to $3,000. The money on these grants, however, is not paid out until the work is actually done. And in this case, the work was not done by Sweet Pea, and so they did not actually receive that $3,000 because the work was not done. So you'll notice that a little bit further down, the board also awarded a, an amount for the same address, for the same address, for a fire alarm. And the reason for that, it's not a duplicate, it's because the first time it was not done at that address. So we wanted to clarify that. Also, the items in the light green at the bottom of the green section, the ones that were ordinance beginning in 13, those were very recently approved, and I don't believe any of those monies have been paid out yet. I was speaking with Larry Kaufman earlier today, who indicated that at least the vast majority of them haven't done the fire alarms yet. And so I don't believe that money has been paid out, but it's money that's been committed because the board has adopted the ordinance telling them they have that money. A brief overview of the email that I sent for the $30,000. In there, it kind of talked about the appropriation versus the budget, and that the appropriation is the legal limit, what we can spend. The budget is sort of the plan of how we plan to spend it. And we were very comfortable with the fact that we legally have the authority to be able to spend the $30,000. We've got room in the appropriation ordinance to cover that, and it goes into a little more detail about where that actually comes from, which items we are appropriating for a different purpose, which we could use the same money in the same fund for this purpose. And then it also indicates that when we actually look at plans for, you know, things we're actually planning to already have saved money from the budget, we've got about $15,000 that we've identified of money that we will not be having as an expense in the budget due to a vacancy that we've had. So we have that $15,000, the remaining $15,000 of the initial proposal. The initial proposal was to do $30,000, which would be able to cover all the businesses, those that had applied, as well as those that have not yet applied for the grant. And if we were to do that full $30,000, we'd have the $15,000 that we had talked about that I just mentioned could be covered through the vacancy. And there'd be another $15,000 that we would just hope that, you know, during the course of the year, some of our other expenditures might not come out quite as much, we might get a little bit additional revenue. And so, again, we think we'd be okay with that. It's not something you want to do very often. We need to be careful not to kind of make those sort of decisions of just hope that things work out going forward too often. But I think we can afford to do it at this point. I think we were conservative enough in our budgeting that we've probably got the wiggle room for this if it's the board's desire to do it.
Now, for those people watching at home, we have a grant program that has two elements to it. The facade that we appropriate $15,000.
Yes.
For our fiscal year, and the life safety that we appropriate $15,000. The life safety part of it is maxed out with these two. And the facade still has some available money for the rest of fiscal year. And the question we're trying to determine, do we want to increase that budget amount for this year or not? And I think that's why we postponed it and tabled it, so we can get this information. I know there's different viewpoints on should we or shouldn't we? And I think this is very helpful for discussion. And now, unless Jill has something to add, I'd open it up. I know we have varying opinions on it, you know? No, it's, and that's healthy, because you want to talk about it. Unfortunately, this program started back with Main Street, so it is, it has been designed specifically for the downtown business district, and that can't change right now. In future, we may have an opportunity to make a new grant program, but for right now, we're looking at just that area. So do, I guess it all comes down to is, do we want to increase the budget or just leave it the way it is? Or anything in between? So, open for.
Just a quick comment to Spencer. Your email was, was very informative, and your analogies were great, because what could have been very complicated, you simplified so that it's easy to understand how we're doing this. So thank you for that. It was very helpful.
Lot of discussions amongst the finance department on how to.
It was perfect.
Make it work, so, thank you.
Thank you.
Open for discussion. If anybody would like to, I guess there is, isn't a motion right now? It's on the table to be discussed?
Did we do the motion?
No, I don't think.
No, we don't have a motion.
We have a motion in a second.
That's what I say, we should have one before we move on. Right now, there's nothing on the floor. We're just discussing the opinions and different kind of views. One other option is just stopping it today, just saying that if we want to increase it, we only increase it by the $10,288, and that's it.
With this $10,288, in theory, could these people be eligible when the grant renews next year with that $15,000? Could we, could we not say it that way? So again, we wouldn't have to increase it now, we would just say these people be reimbursed on next year's $15,000.
Oh, like keep them in the queue?
Well, right, so instead of $15,000 next year, we'd only have $4,800 and whatever it would be going forward. That way, we're not increasing anything this year. The people would still get their money. It would be delayed, but it sounds like that they don't have them done anyways, so. And then very, you know, very concerned that it is, is, is just geared to one part of town. You know, there's, there's a lot of people who've, you can see these numbers. These business people have been significantly impacted by, by this ordinance, and they're not alone just in the downtown. It looks like to me that through this grant money, that there's about $5,500 or more that these businesses aren't even any longer in existence down here, which concerns me about keep putting more money into the downtown where these businesses are coming and going, especially when we have this tiff coming down the road where some of these may be tore down, where today we, we increase our $30,000 into this, and we find out in a year this building's burnt, you know, is, is getting tore down. Again, if this money could be used next year, and say this $10,000 comes off the $15,000 that's allocated for next year, I don't think, I don't think we'd really affect much. And when I hear from all the departments, from Steve, from the chief, from all, how everyone is so strapped from you guys, how everyone doesn't have any money, and we, we're doing so much more with less, and I just, I get a mixed message, I guess, as a new guy to the board. Where do we come up with this $30,000? You know, I, you've explained that, Spencer, I understand, but as a whole, when you look at it from a, you just, you just question that, you know? When, when we're cutting back on squad cars and fire things and things like that, and then to come up with an extra $30,000, as I was previously, I just, I just don't agree with, with that standpoint of it.
So the concept you're proposing is to approve the applications now? Would they not be reimbursed until next fiscal year?
Well, we don't have it, we don't have it allocated at this point.
Right.
So the only way it would be allocated is, I don't know, when is the, when is the grant, is that on the, on the calendar year? Is that when that, when it expires for the per year?
Fiscal year.
Fiscal year, May 1?
Fiscal year.
April 30th.
So you go ahead, approve it now, they could go ahead with the project with the understanding that there would be a reimburse next year?
Right, and then there'd be, you know, 40, 4722 left for, because, I mean, I must have told six people this week that they should apply, that weren't even aware of it, which is another thing that, Larry, I think that we've talked about, that to have this grant, we should really make sure that everybody's aware of it, not just hearsay, because I, just this week, I talked to a lot of people that were just not, not aware that that was an option that they could have. And maybe some of these in the B2 that have been dragging their feet, or a B1, rather. So that, that's the way I looked at it. Thank you.
I've got, you know, I've got a different perspective on this thing. Working in a church and a school for 30 years, I look at more that, you know, whether people have the information or not, that's a communications problem. But I look at it from the life safety perspective, like the fire department, I'm sure. This is an incentive to get these smoke detectors and update that life safety equipment in these buildings. And I'm concerned about the people that, you know, own a restaurant downstairs and have residents upstairs. I'm concerned about the structure of the building being wood, framing, no fire separations and that. And that's the type of buildings, a lot of these things are, where they will burn. And I think postponing life safety is a bad idea. Spencer has proven, you know, that there is money there, and I would encourage, you know, the village and the village board to keep that incentive there, to get the alarms, you know, stop the delay and encourage the participation to get the alarms in the buildings. And it's not financial, it's not communication, it's not about the other parts of town that don't have this. I certainly would love to be able to offer that to them, but it's about getting the life safety measures into that part of the community, the businesses, and that's why it was put in place. And I support the $30,000.
Do, if I'm reading this right, we, we only have $1,250 that has been awarded on the facade end for this year?
Yes, that's my understanding, yeah.
I believe there's a couple in the queue, but.
Is there?
Yeah, but awarded so far.
Because I didn't know if the, if the opportunity is also there to. Because I didn't know if that, if the opportunity is also there to reappropriate from one to the other.
Yes.
So that may be an option.
Except for. Right. You can reappropriate within a fund between one item or another. The challenge with the amount that we have dedicated for the facade grant is that it's paid for from hotel motel funds, which can only be used for things that promote tourism. And it's been determined based on, you know, the fact that it's in a business district, it's been established from the downtown, something we're trying to attempt to beautify. The facade grant portion would contribute to attracting visitors to the town, whereas the life safety items wouldn't necessarily contribute to that. And so we're not able to use the same funding source to cover those. Before, when we were home rule, we could certainly do that. And we were able to switch those back and forth. But now that we've lost that home rule ability, the funds have to be segregated and there's not the opportunity to move them back and forth. Is that correct, John?
That answers that question.
I concur with trustee Barker. I am in favor of replenishing that, that money. And I think as trustee Scott pointed out, particularly in the B1, we have buildings that are very old. They're wall to wall. People living above them, I think it's critical that we do what we can do to keep those buildings safe. So I definitely am in favor of this.
Yeah. And I would have to agree as well. I support it. I think trustee Barker said it well. This is very important. Life safety is very important, some of these buildings. It's important to do these updates in there. I, I mean, it's, it's good money, well spent. That's how I feel about it.
I much wish there was a way, since it's a grant, that we could prove need. Because I guess the question is, the question is, how do you know that someone who has applied for a grant couldn't afford it to have it done in the first place? There are businesses that are doing well in the downtown. So does that now take money away from a person whose business may be struggling, who wants to try to continue in the downtown area, but may not be able to afford to do something like this, where that's a person who is in need of a grant?
In some cases, you know, it could be an incentive, certainly. The other, the other thing that I am thinking is, if we awarded the $30,000 to the, to the program, it doesn't necessarily mean that it's all spent. So it might not reach that limit.
Well, the one, the one item the board has to consider is if we're going to increase it by the 30, do you leave the rules the same and let it stay 3,000? Or are you going to reduce it to the 1,500 from this point on? Wasn't it 3,000?
That was another point, that I, I didn't quite understand why previously they would have got 3,000. And then secondly, to incentive, to the incentive of this, these people are already clearly doing their alarms, whether they get these grants or not. Because if this money doesn't come through, these people are already doing these fire alarms. So the incentive is, just as to what you're saying, Bob, is if, if you're financially set, you're, you're just getting another three grand or 1,500, again, of taxpayer money. And I just, again, I don't agree with the fact that it's an incentive because these people have to do it. It's a village ordinance. The incentive is, you're going to either get $750, $100 or, you know, fined eventually, or, or however the village is going to proceed. But I can't see where, again, these are already, obviously you have the bids for these where you got these numbers, right? So I mean, these people are in the works to, to get these done. They're going to be in compliance, whether they get the money or not, correct?
Assuming that they follow through with it, yes. But we do have the bids.
And then it looks that there's, you know, there's non-for-profits to what you say. There's non-for-profits. The Alano has, has got the money. There's, again, I, I like the fact that we got this today. I wish, I hope that we would get this in the future, anytime any one of these grants would come up. So we would have this, where we don't get repetitiveness as far as the same building and have to research as we did on this one to see what happened there and if it was paid out. So I think moving forward, this is a good chart to use and, and to keep track of. But again, I, I think these people have to do it, whether they get the money or not, as, as does the B2 and B3 and B4 and any other part of the community.
What are some of the items that qualify as life safety? It's not just fire alarms. There's other things, correct?
Some of the other ones that have been approved are electric panels, power poles, and air conditioning equipment.
Which I question how the air conditioning unit is a life safety. That, that one I did notice. And I, I don't know how air conditioning would be considered a life safety. And that's where I get concerned, where maybe this grant was abused a little bit along the way. And, and now to throw another $30,000 into it, where, where there's some questionable things, I just can't spend other people's money like.
I think that's sort of a misrepresentation. If I remember that correctly, that was with the framemakers. And it had to do with more with the wiring, which is, it was electrical power.
See, La La Lee says that.
Yeah. I think it's just, I think it's just not clear on there, but we could go back and look. But I, if my memory serves me right, because we had a lot of discussion about it that night. So we didn't just do it.
All I can go by is what the staff gives me, black and white, not your memory.
Right, exactly. Yeah, that's why I'm explaining it to you.
That's where, again, I think that this needs a tighter, tighter look moving forward as, as far as where they're going. And as we see, there was a double up that we had to research to even find out if they were paid twice, as we know, Jill, right? I mean, we had to go find that out. And so that's concerning to me. And then again, as, as looking at throwing other people's money into this, I just, I just don't agree with it.
Jill, you might know this. As far as an air conditioning, wouldn't that go to air quality in a life safety?
It could. As Sue said, I can look through the old files.
I think it was more the wiring. It's an old building. There was.
Well, in a school, you have to bring in fresh air, so you have an air quality issue there.
Recirculate.
And those restrictions are getting tighter and tighter, where you have to have so many air changes and all of that stuff.
If you're talking about a school, it's not talking about a business that isn't required to have air conditioning at all.
But I don't recall either that discussion at all with framemakers about just throwing in an AC unit.
It wasn't just, I want to get an air conditioner. We'll pay for it.
Related, but I think to Jill's, to the request, Jill could probably verify that.
Trustee Addington.
Lot of interesting, and I think important, questions were asked here tonight. I think Bob's question is, is a humdinger about, you know, need. And, and very important. I think we can talk about this thing for another hour and a half.
No, because we're not staying that long.
So I'm going to make a motion. And my motion is going to be to follow the suggestion that the mayor made and, and make a motion that we approve the $10,288. And let's take care of the people. I'm very concerned with doing nothing at this point, because we have applications on the table. And I think to pull and tell them after they've applied that all of a sudden we're not going to consider that anymore would be wrong. So I'm going to follow what the mayor had suggested earlier and say that would be a compromise and make a motion to, to authorize the $10,288 as additional monies for this year. And anybody who hasn't applied, what, if they're, if we put in the next year's budget, any additional monies, they can apply for next year, even if they've done the work this year. So I'll make that, again, I'll make that in the form of a motion to hold the amount of $10,288.
Second, Scott.
Just a point of clarification for the attorney. If, if that were to fail, for example, clearly, I, I feel that we should do the third, you know, I feel it should be as presented. So logistically, if this motion fails, do we then go back to, how does, how do we get the other one back on the table? Or do we?
We've never made one.
Someone else would make another.
This is the first motion we have.
This is the first motion, yeah.
But, but we still have the agenda item sitting there. What happens to that agenda item? That's my question.
Someone can just make a motion for an alternative proposal. It could be the proposal as listed on the agenda.
Okay. That was my question. Thank you.
So right now, there's a motion to appropriate $10,288 and to the ones that are actually filed, and that's a total dollar amount.
John, can I just get one?
There's a second. No, I'm going to do a question. So the question, on the question.
So if, if no increase is done tonight, does this, are these people eligible for next year?
Yes.
They are. So, so moving forward, if we get 15 more requests, those would just be passed on to next year?
Well, no.
Have we made the change yet to allow them to start the work before we actually do the applications? I don't believe that's actually been changed in our ordinance yet.
Oh, that's a good point. They have to get approval first.
That would have to be.
An agenda item for.
To allow them to do that next year.
But there's, we could change that if we wanted to.
You're talking about for people who have started work but have not yet applied?
For people that, I believe initially, the question that was addressed at the last meeting.
After the fact.
Is that just because they have started on the work does not, before they were officially given the grant by the board, does not preclude them from receiving reimbursement for it? I don't know if we specified whether or not they had to have already applied before they started the work or any of those.
Well, some of these are done.
Yeah, technically, they're supposed to.
Bishop Chili is done. So, so they're done and paid for. And now they're applying. So where is that? And I think some of these others may be done. So, again, there's a lot of inconsistencies on this grant stuff.
Well, I, I know trustee Barry mentioned at the last meeting that if this were to be approved, I thought you mentioned this, and I actually put it in the ordinance I distributed, that consideration of grant awards may include those businesses that have commenced life safety improvements prior to the passage of this ordinance, so long as they properly apply for such a grant. Now, that makes it seem like it's work in progress. I think there's maybe a distinction between those people who have already done, done it, it's paid for, versus those people who are kind of in process.
They're phased, doing the phased approach.
So again, back to my point, do those people, or I guess, who knows if we even budget this grant money in the next budget, right? I mean, so, so I guess that's, that's a lot of hypotheticals there, that, that would, would they apply to that and, and so forth. So.
I still think we need to have a way to decide how the grant is given is by the, by need.
Yes.
So on that point, I'm not saying that's a bad idea, but there have to be some clear rules set out as to what need me, need me.
Yeah.
Need means, what documentation you're going to require, protecting that documentation so it's, you know, not distributed to the public. And, you know, I guess there's a rational basis for saying you're needy and you're not, fine.
Well, when you're dealing with the people's money, and if somebody can afford to do the job, do they really need a grant at that point?
Well, and again, I think it goes back to why we did the grant. And it was to incentivize, you know, not even looking at the, whether a business is, is successful or not, but more to incentivize to get the work done, period.
But we incentivized by postponing this.
You know, it's kind of like when the Porsche dealer gives a rebate, you know.
No, I understand.
You know, it's like, if you're a millionaire, it doesn't matter if you're.
But we incentivized it by giving them more time.
Right.
We incentivized it by giving them to do it in portions.
Yeah.
To make it easier. We've kind of been fair on it.
Yeah, I would have no problem with looking into something like that.
Could we approve it?
You know, for the next fiscal year or something.
Could we approve, could we potentially approve the $30,000 based on contingent upon the criteria being set at a later date? Is that something that could be done?
Send it to committee and talk about it and work out legalities.
And once that criteria was created, that we knew that it was going to the people that deemed necessary based on financial, yearly reports, whatever the criteria was.
I think, Steve, that's, that's a good question. And I would say to you, any person not on this list, that would, if, if we got the criteria done, if they've applied before we changed the criteria, then I think they ran under the old criteria, unfortunately. But if we, if, if we were to do it that way, and, and write some of this needs criteria in there, then anybody who applies after the fact would have to follow the new rules. I don't think there's any question.
And that would be, when you say that this document, you're talking, John, like financial reports, business.
Demonstrate a hardship. Demonstrate a hardship.
We could create an old rating system on the age of the structure, the condition, financial. You could create a whole different rating system that they have to comply with.
To be honest with you, my problem with that discussion has nothing to do with the quality of that suggestion, which I think is a good suggestion. I think the problem is that if somebody, as a businessperson, says, oh, they approved the $30,000 and they're going to write the rules at a late, sometime in the future, I'm going to get my application in before the rules change. So.
Disbursement of funds until, for me.
Yeah. There'd be no, you know, the application isn't a guarantee of.
Yeah, that's true.
Of receipt, you know.
I mean, I just hate to stifle. I mean, look at this progress that's here. I mean, that's progress. That's things that have happened. And if we just take this away, next year during our budget cycle, we could decide if, hey, all this work got done, maybe we don't need this next year. And why, I mean, why it's available now, let's take advantage of it and allow this work to continue going on. Allow improvements to continue coming forward.
You know, I think the best way to do it, you have a motion and second on the floor. Let's see where that goes. If that doesn't pass, then we go on. If it passes, then, you know.
Before, before we end the conversation, and I just, I, I agree, you know, that I agree that we need to help these people that apply. Bob has a valid point. If, if we can prove that, that seems like a monumental job and a lot of red tape for people. But maybe they'll do it if they really have a hardship. If they don't need it, maybe they won't.
Well, let's face it, if Starbucks came in here and they asked for a grant.
Yeah, right, right.
Exactly.
Well, but, I mean, other businesses will come in and ask for anything, you know, whether it's life safety or anything. They're going to come in and ask for stuff.
It might not be that big of a deal to incentivize them to come in here to do it.
Right.
And we can do that, put building fees and stuff like that besides that, right?
Well, so there's all kinds of incentives, you know. But we really are changing the program. You know, we really are changing the program. So we're rethinking this in the fourth quarter.
Because we're trying to get more money into it to help it. We're changing it by coming back. If not, we would have sat there and said, here's the money.
Right. And that's going to happen, you know, maybe happen in the future. Or this could take longer than, than we would like it to. And I don't, you know, I don't want to see them lose the momentum. But, you know, I, I want to see something happen with these people that have a lot.
I think it's a little misconstrued, the momentum and that the progress, because this was a, was a, was a board forced issue. So these people aren't doing this because they want to, or that there's some incentive. They're doing it because they have to.
Right. But it's still, it's still life safety. It's the right thing to do.
It's the right thing to do. And it's not the only thing you can do to get a grant. I mean, clearly, there's other life safety issues. And, and, you know, we look at, now, whether or not it's true, I don't know. But, you know, the old Sight &amp; Sound building apparently has been sold. It's a very old building. It's probably going to need upgrades. It's, you know, we want that to happen. We want, you know, I, I think that's the whole point. But, yeah, I, I agree with Jim. Let's vote on it, see if it, where it goes, and go from there.
One last, I get to say a comment?
You can comment.
All right.
You're the mayor.
I tend to kind of agree. And the reason this came up wasn't, it was just kind of a happy medium. But it was also thinking about the, this entire process that's been delayed several times. And then, Wendy, you just say enough's enough, and we appropriate another $10,000 and that's it. And, and that's what the motion is. And then, then next year, we revisit it. If we want to increase it, then those people can, maybe we can set different rules and they can apply for it next year.
And I wouldn't be adverse to continue to work on the needs question now. But I would like to just clean this up, get this past us, and then.
Well, that's, that's the motion. So we'll see what, what happens. And if any other question, yes, the attorney can.
Just want to make sure I understand exactly what's being voted on. So if someone, do you want to summarize?
Yes, I will do it. My motion was to approve an additional $10,288, which would take care of the 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, 6, the seven pending applications that are on the table at the, in the village offices, that, for which there is no money presently allocated. There are two other pending applications, but they're, they're already funded with, with the money that's remaining. So the $10,288 would in fact create additional money for those seven applications that are already in our hands.
At a max of 1,500?
At the maximum of, at the dollars that are listed, a maximum of 1,500.
And so those businesses have already applied. So in the past, we had language that I put in the ordinance that there's got to be 30 days about putting in your grant submission. That all goes away. Language about, yeah, I guess it's real simple now. It's just.
And again, this is only 1,500, not the 3,000.
Right.
And then, Spencer, would, would we then, instead of that $10,288 amount, does that, does that 2380 versus the 1883 for the dentist office, does that, should that be compensated at that time and added into that $10,288?
Well, I guess that's the question. So currently, there's enough money in the budget to fund the dental office at the 1,000. So, currently, there's enough money in the budget to fund the dental office at the 1,883, which is above the 1,500 limit that would be for the new dollars. So, I think, I mean, it could be whichever way the board would like to do it, but I think it makes sense to me, if we're saying everything above the budgeted amount is capped at a limit of 1,500, the dentist office will already have received more than that, and then we don't need to pay them their additional 500 to bring them even further above it.
And then we don't need another motion?
No.
So, to recap, the motion is to approve an additional 10,288 to our life safety grant program, and only to the seven that are before us that have actually applied. And then, at that point, if it passes, the grant program would be done for this year. On the question.
And it would also, there would be a reduction of the award to any particular business from 3,000 to 1,500 for life safety.
For these seven.
For those seven.
A max. I think we understand it. Okay, any other questions? If not, I'm going to ask for a roll call. I'll ask for a roll call.
Trustee Addington.
Yes.
Trustee Barry.
Yes.
Trustee Scott.
Yes.
Trustee Barker.
Yes.
Trustee Nero.
Yes.
Trustee Seneca.
No.
Okay, the motion passes, and thank you for your research and explaining it to us, so thank you.
Thank you, Jill. I know I put the question three this week, so thank you.
Great explanations, Spencer, it's really well done.
And for the futures, in following up now with these discussions on needs, where would that go to, what committee would that go to, economic development, or?
Building and zoning.
Building and zoning.
Administration and finance.
Because I'd like to now say, "Let's refer this on," and start that discussion, because at some point, yeah, I want to reopen it and talk about the other businesses, but it's to bed for now, and then, and then when the needs thing gets worked out, then we can bring it back.
I would say it'd either be admin or building and zoning, and we'll look at the calendar and see which one's coming up soonest.
Well, we talked about, I've talked with Spencer about it at administration and finance meeting, possibly in another week or so. He was going to work on availability of time, and then get back to, probably to you, and then to me.
Okay.
So, if you want to refer it there, then we'll put it on that agenda.
Okay. Again, I think we need to then, on our website, of course, put that the grant program has been, it's completed with the life safety emphasis, if facade's still available, and we'll, the attorney has a question or something to clarify.
Yeah, just a procedural comment. I think before we start conversations on agenda items, procedurally, we should have a motion in a second, and then open it up for discussion. To your point, what happens if the motion fails? So, if a trustee isn't comfortable with the motion as, or the agenda item as written, they'd make a motion to amend. There'd then be a vote on that motion to amend. If that were to fail, then we'd be back to the original motion as written. Procedurally, it's just a lot cleaner, follows the rules of order.
And/or during that discussion, if there was complete discomfort, then it would be the motion to table.
Correct. Postpone.
Or postpone.
Or postpone, excuse me, postpone.
My second announcement is, hopefully, would you mind if I leave early this evening? Now, we got through this item, I've got a babysitter at home, a wife out of town, and I-
No, family first.
Motion to approve. Yeah, go, please.
I apologize.
No.
You'll send us a wire if I sound-
I will.
Thank you.
We'll tell you about the 57 things we added after you last.
All right, well, we'll move on. Move on to new business. Community unit, school district 201, homecoming 2013. Board to consider an ordinance allowing for amplified sound during the school homecoming celebration on Thursday, October the 3rd, 2013. Manager Searl.
The bonfire and amplified sound will be on school property from 7:00 to 9:30 PM. The fire department will issue the burn permit, and be on location for the bonfire. Police department will issue the parade permit, the parade route is being altered this year. This year, the parade route will have participants line up near Manning School, and head south on Cass, east on Burlington, north on Linden, back to Manning. Parade route will be publicized at Norfolk to Burlington on Cass. And Larry McIntyre, I know who's been working closely with the folks at the high school, has some comments, or is able to answer questions?
Yeah, here to answer questions, but that's pretty straightforward. It is a change, usually that parade travels south to north, and has continued up to Melrose. Working with the high school as well as staff, we made some adjustments that will make it much more safe and convenient for staff. We also used to stage the parade near the water division, behind the fences, we're bypassing that altogether, so this, this new plan's going to be much easier, and we'll still have the benefit of having the homecoming parade downtown.
And you don't have to close Cass until, until-
Until you get on-
Norfolk.
Can somebody take care of the weather, because it's been canceled like the last two years?
I'll work on it.
You're in charge of that.
Larry, how do we publicize it to the-
We'll put it on our website, and then, of course, it's really a high school function. The main people who attend will be families and friends of the participants of the high school, and in the parade and the homecoming game, so they handle a lot of their publicity, but we'll definitely put it on our website.
Any other comments? Then I'll entertain a motion to approve the ordinance as presented.
So moves, Scott.
Second, Barry.
Motion made, second it. Seeing no questions, roll call, please.
Trustee Scott.
Yes.
Trustee Barry.
Yes.
Trustee Addington.
Yes.
Trustee Seneca.
Yes.
Trustee Nero.
Yes.
Trustee Barker.
Yes.
New business C, we've already done B with the ComEd.
It's a stray animal care fee increase. Board to consider amending ordinance 12-61 to increase the fee charge to the claiming owner for the care of a stray dog or cat. Manager Searl.
Hinsdale Humane Society has recently increased their fees for stray animal care. The animal claimed by their owners increased from $25 to $30. The board is asked to increase the fee to charge to the claiming owner to a minimum of $30 to match this increase. The fee for an unclaimed dog increased from $100 to $125, and unclaimed cat from $50 to $55. These increases are permitted by the agreement between the village and the Hinsdale Humane Society for Stray Animal Care, per ordinance 1260, and Chief Mulhern is available for any questions, or may have some comments.
We're just looking to recoup, so we're not losing money.
Is this consistent, like with surrounding communities, kind of a fair-
We've been very happy, and they are very, very well priced.
If any, then I'll entertain a motion to approve as presented.
So moves, Seneca.
Second, Nero.
Motion's made, second it. Roll call, please.
Trustee Seneca.
Yes.
Trustee Nero.
Yes.
Trustee Barker.
Yes.
Trustee Scott.
Yes.
Trustee Barry.
Yes.
Trustee Addington.
Yes.
New business D, regular meeting agenda modification. Board to consider an ordinance to amend chapter 2 of the Westmont Code of Ordinances to add committee reports to the regular meeting agendas of the Village Board of Trustees. Manager Searl.
This came up in conversation recently with the mayor about the idea of providing a more formal report publicly of the various committees that we have. A number of other communities structure their meetings that way. I pointed out that, you know, our ordinance is technically outlined by, I'm sorry, our agenda structure is actually found in our village ordinances, so the thought was to amend that section, include another item for committee reports, and then, as the various committees would meet, the chair for that committee could give an update publicly as to what went on at that meeting. And I had a little note here, I don't know if I should mention it, about our calendar question. You going to bring that up at the end?
Any questions on, basically, the first meeting of every month? There'd be a listing of the committees, and if there was any current information, meeting times, or any information you'd like to provide, that's the time when we would give you the opportunity.
Good. So, it'd be in addition to the trustee items, it'd be a separate report.
Is there a way to limit that? I know-
You want us to give three-minute talk?
Well, no, but some of, some of it can go on for, you know, quite a while. The committee meetings go on for, you know, a long time.
Well, you only have one committee meeting per two-week period, so there might be, you would just apply to the last committee that met, so you would actually only have one report per meeting.
And it wouldn't be, it'd basically be the highlight, any important issues that you-
Yeah, that's what I'm, I'm looking for, the quick update.
Yeah.
Get the information out.
And basically, not only to update, we can read about it, but basically, update the community.
Right.
If there's something you want to talk about.
Yeah, and I, I mean, just to remind the community that all of these meetings are open, and we encourage residents to come to these committee meetings. I was just looking at the website now, and I didn't drill down far enough, but I'm wondering if the minutes of our committee meetings are on the web. Are they on, under the, I can't get to it.
I'm not sure if they're all up to date, but they're-
Because, you know, that would be another great, you know, way of getting the information, because I'm with Bruce, we don't want to spend, you know, 20 minutes talking about a two-hour meeting that we had.
Yeah, that's certainly a concern. I know in the past, we've had, I think at last board, different boards in the past, where they have commented, the residents have asked about certain things that came to the board, and, you know, the comments were made, "Oh, this has been through committee." Since we don't televise the committees, you know, not everybody's really attuned into what committees are out there, what they're handling, so it's another opportunity to provide some additional information to the public.
Yeah, go ahead.
So, I would entertain a motion to amend an ordinance to amend that chapter 2.
So moves.
Second. Motion made, second it. Roll call, please.
Trustee Addington.
Yes.
Trustee Nero.
Yes.
Trustee Barker.
Yes.
Trustee Scott.
Yes.
Trustee Barry.
Yes.
Trustee Seneca.
Yes.
Now, one quick other item that, just to think about, in our 2013 meeting schedule, is whether to reschedule or cancel the two meetings, that one is on Thanksgiving, November the 28th, and the other is on December 26th. So, I will, we will put that on the next month's, next agenda in two weeks, to decide if we want to reschedule, what day we want to reschedule to, or just not have a meeting. So, I kind of rely on staff, if that's something that you can get by without having one, so think about that, and in two weeks, it'll be on the-
On the agenda.
On the agenda.
I bet they want a Thanksgiving with us, though.
They might.
Fussy TV.
Maybe Ginny could make a carrot cake or something.
Football, kill the year.
Apple pie, apple pie, yeah.
Miscellaneous. Is there any other miscellaneous information?
Now that he left, why don't we make a motion that he asked to wear a pantsuit?
The attorney, he says, now that he's not here, but, again, the executive session that was planned today will be done in a committee meeting on-